Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Glazer.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long. Here. Thank you. So we have a couple of presentations and we're gonna go ahead and do the California Retired Teachers Week proclamation first in case you ladies want to bail on us, but you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you would like to. So California Retired Teachers Week, November 3rd through the 9th. Whereas the California Retired Teachers Association was formed by Laura E. Settle in 1929 at the start of the Great Depression with the goal of relieving the economic hardships suffered by retired teachers and has since become a leading advocate for providing teachers with sufficient retirement income for 90 years. And whereas California Retired Teachers Association also provides continuing support to active and future teachers, including grants, scholarships, and donations of more than $600,000 a year. And whereas a vast majority of California's retired teachers share a commitment to improve their communities through volunteer activities. And whereas retired teachers lead by example, including dozens of members who have given more than 4,000 hours of services. And whereas statewide retired teachers can be found serving their communities in a host of activities. And whereas here in Fortuna, local retired teachers volunteer in schools, museums, hospitals, the Little Red Schoolhouse, other community organizations, and the food bank, and gave 2,500 in scholarships and 500 to our museums last year alone. And whereas the annual dollar value of this volunteer time donated throughout the state by retired teachers reached nearly 58 million during the most recent reporting period. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Fortuna, in recognition of the vital role retired teachers fulfill in every community in California, and to honor their ongoing commitment to all teachers, we therefore declare the week of November 3rd through the 9th, 2019, to be proclaimed. California Retired Teachers Week. I think we're missing a sentence there. Sign this fourth day of November.
Yes, I really appreciate the council's proclamation on our behalf. Many of the teachers locally really do a lot of volunteerism, and I thought it was appropriate that we recognize that. So thank you so very much. We really appreciate this and we will display this proudly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is the completion of the Roner Creek Flood Control Project. Merritt?
So I just wanted to take this point and really recognize the accomplishment that the cities had with the Roner Creek Flood Control Project. The most recent phase was the Hillside Creek Flood Control Project, which was a piece of the larger project. We have Brett Vivian here tonight. He's gonna be making the presentation. Brett has really been, he's been the project manager for the last few phases and really helped carry the burden of a lot of the work there. And also Jeremy Savella is in the crowd as well. He was another engineer working on this project. And Jeremy started early on, I think it was in 2008 or 2009, working on some of the hydraulic models. And I worked with Jeremy on that when I was a consultant. But this is a project that's been 10 years in the coming. It's been about $10 million. We're burning about $1 million a year. I still remember when the council had to decide whether we wanted to put the creek in big culverts or run it, you know, reroute the creek or use the existing channel in overflow. So there were some big decisions to be made by the community, and I thought it was important to have Brett Vivian and Jeremy Savella from GHD down and to just give an overview of the project from the public and just a recap for the council and the public so they can see what an accomplishment this is. And then also talk about the next steps, which would be floodplain remapping and possibly other flood control projects in the future. So with that, I'll hand it over to Brett. Do we have a clicker for him?
He has it.
He has it, okay.
Thanks for the introduction. Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, for allowing me to give a little presentation about this project. I'm really excited to see the kind of finalization, and it's a real honor to be here. So for the presentation, I'll be brief. You've sat through a number of very long, very detailed presentations, and so trying to just go with pictures and an overview, as you are all very familiar with the project. So I'll give a little bit of history and the origin of the project, the timeline, and when just big decisions were made, and the construction sequencing, and then a lot about the project benefits. So all the way back in 1982, we came across this old plan in the Winsler and Kelly archives for a bypass along Roner Creek. So flooding was recognized long ago in the city of Fortuna. And as you can see, Roner Creek kind of comes down, it goes under Main Street from Roner Park, down along, parallel to Fortuna Boulevard, and then kind of doglegs out and goes towards 12th Street. That flooding was recognized, and the engineers back in the early 80s recommended putting in a bypass channel to take some of that flow. So fast forward about until into 2013, and we came up with actually a very, very similar sort of project design. We started with the previous bypass, and a lot of property owners were hesitant to accept this as it was a large impact on the properties and also kind of allowed for like two creeks going through their property. So we came up with a way to move the bypass down to a parcel that is now right behind George's Glass. So we implemented a bypass for high flows and then widening throughout the creek. We realized that there were bridge replacements that needed to take place, so three bridges were removed and two bridges were built in their place. Then did some culvert replacements on Hillside Creek, some armoring of the channel where we didn't have room. As you're well aware, there are some buildings that are very close to the creek, and we had to stabilize the channel and the banks. And then where we had some room down in the lower area, we could do some floodplain and some habitat improvements to mitigate some of the impacts of the more flood control project components. And then in the downstream reach, retrofit a culvert to allow for fish passage that was a previous barrier, and then also implement some flood control benefits. And I'll get into some of those in a little bit. So timeline, back in the early 80s, as I said, the need for reducing flooding on Roner Creek was identified, and then it was reiterated in the 2005 Storm Drain Master Plan. In 2009, as Merritt pointed out, Jeremy Savella and some others at then Winsler and Kelly looked at the hydrology and the hydraulics, so how water kind of flows into the creek and through the creek to come up with some concepts for alternatives to reduce flooding. And then with that kind of legwork completed, then the city was able to get the Prop 1E grant through the Department of Water Resources, which funded in part, along with the city's redevelopment funds that they were able to hold on to, the design permitting and outreach for the overall project. Then the city was successful at getting a little more money through the Urban Streams Restoration Grant Program in 2015. Then in 2016 and 2017, we completed the first two phases of implementation. So that was basically from Main Street down to 12th Street, all through the Roner Creek Channel. Then the city was successful at using Measure E funds combined with FEMA Hazard Mitigation Funds to fund the Hillside Creek Project, and then getting funding from California Department of Fish and Wildlife through their Fisheries Restoration Grant Program to fund the 12th Street improvements for fish passage. And then in 2019, this past summer, we just finished building the Hillside Creek and the 12th Street project components. So this has been a long process, so you know, really gained legs or grew legs in 2012 with that funding from Prop 1E, from the Department of Water Resources. And a lot of us were in this same room in 2013, doing a lot of outreach and discussions about what the project should be, how it should look, and evaluating those various alternatives. There was extensive property owner outreach, as you know, this project intersects about 50 different parcels. It affects about 150 different properties that would see flooding in the 100-year storm. So property owner buy-in was a huge part of this, and also property owner and business support for the project was very important. As a council, you know, highly values their community, their, you know, commercial properties, their residences, and didn't want to impact, or wanted to see the least impact to them and provide the greatest benefit. So it also involved a lot of permitting. So you know, through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Water Board, and NOAA Fisheries, everyone had a say in evaluating the project and giving a permit. The permitting agencies were really easy to work with. You know, it was extensive going through it and a lot of iterative kind of design to figure out exactly what to do, but they were very supportive of the project and saw the need for Fortuna. And then as I said, it intersects about 50 properties, commercial, residential, school district properties, city, county, and state properties. So everyone had to really buy in. And then as a part of those properties that the project intersected, the city and GHD got, or well, the city got temporary construction easements, so saying it's okay to build the project and it should look like this. And then also permanent drainage easements, which really allowed the city to be able to go back and maintain the project. Whereas pre-project, it was with the patchwork of ownership, it was really difficult for the city to maintain the creek channel, and it was basically on each individual property owner to maintain it, to get their own permits. So it really facilitates the annual maintenance of it. So in 2016, that was the first phase. So there were phases one, two, three, and four. There was also a Phase A and B. It depended on how things were constructed and how funding kind of shook out. But just on the timeline, in 2016, this was mostly the floodplain improvements and habitat improvements from Smith Lane, which is right there for Busco Lumber, down to 12th Street. So largely kind of out of the public eye, back in an undeveloped area, where we could do some floodplain enhancements with side channels for kind of high-flow refugia, as well as increasing capacity, log structures for habitats, boulder weers to arrest headcuts, and roughened channels to kind of provide some fish habitat and the first portion of the overflow swale. So this largely just involved, this footprint was the high school, which were very supportive of the project, and then a couple of property owners with larger parcels. In 2017, this was probably the largest phase of the project and intersected the most properties. So this was from Main Street, basically where it comes under Main Street at Roner Park and under the building next to the feed store, and then intersects approximately, I want to say 30 properties as it winds down along Stillman Way, parallels Fortuna Boulevard, and then cuts back behind the Cal Fire Facility, and then ended at Ferbusco Lumber. So this involved the implementation of some tieback walls, some rock slope protection along banks, some habitat improvements where we could fit them in, some small floodplanes, replacement of bridges, so new bridges, more bank stabilization. So this is a good example of just how close some buildings were to the edge of the creek, and so built measures to protect those buildings. The completion of the bypass swale with a lateral weir, and the reach behind Cal Fire, which was highly constricted. So you know, looking back to 1982, it was really apparent that there were some highly constricted reaches where you just could not get enough flow through, and this is a good example of that highly constricted reach. So then, fast forward to 2019, the 12th Street improvements was really focused on fish passage. So this was a three-bay culvert, and we basically put in a series of concrete and boulder weers to make small little drops so that fish, in particular salmon, could make their way back through the culvert. It had been a barrier for a number of years. The county put this culvert in in the early 1950s, I believe, and so then the habitat kind of started to degrade. So when the biologists were out relocating fish while they were putting in a diversion to build this project, they did find five Coho salmon down in the lower reach, so now those Coho could make their way up through the culvert now. And then the larger project, and it was maybe seen a lot more going right under Fortuna Boulevard, right there by Ivy's Automotive and Les Schwab and Fortuna Veterinary Clinic, was the Hillside Creek Project. So that extended from basically Fortuna Boulevard all the way up to Ronerville Road. So we were able to do some habitat improvements up in the upper reach with some log structures and kind of a meandering stream. And then a large culvert that you can see kind of in the middle of the frame here. So we did three culverts. They total about 400 feet total in length, required trenching through Fortuna Boulevard. I'm sure everybody in this room was very aware of the project going on. I guess I should make note that that first phase in 2016 was built by Fiegus Construction. In 2017, it was Mercer Frasier. And then this past year, the 12th Street improvements were done by McCullough Construction. And then the Hillside Creek was done by Glickman Excavating. All contractors did a great job, and it was really good to work with all of them. And we've tested it a few times, in particular last February along Roner Creek, and you know, what would have caused flooding previously didn't this past year. So look forward to seeing some bigger events on Hillside Creek and seeing how the project performs. So the next steps are to submit the letter of map revision to FEMA. We've submitted a conditional letter of map revision, so that's basically getting FEMA's comment on the project. They have commented to say it meets FEMA's standards for the National Flood Insurance Program, and then we can revise the flood insurance rate maps. And I'll get into a little bit more about what that looks like. So the project benefits. The 1% annual chance storm, or the 100-year storm, or we could just say seven and a half inches of rainfall in 24 hours, that's the 100-year storm here in Fortuna, looked like this before we started the project. So the dark blue is deeper water, the light blue is shallower water. I'm sure you're all familiar, when in, I believe it was 2015, when Fortuna Boulevard flooded. So that was about a 10-year event. I think we got about five inches then. So a little more, a little quicker could result in, you know, extensive flooding. But through our project and the phased approach, we systematically reduced that flooding. The dark areas are where the flooding used to be, the blue areas are where it still was. So that's with Hillside Creek, and then with 12th Street, we have reduced that flooding associated with that seven-and-a-half-inch rainfall event to within the channel extent. So when we apply to FEMA, this is what we've gotten conditional approval on. We just need to do some paperwork and submit updated models and such. This will be the new special flood hazard area for the 100-year storm, which is limited to the channel and does not affect any structures. So as I said, it reduces that footprint of the 100-year storm. This is also, this affects 150 parcels in Fortuna and has implications on whether you are required or not to pay flood insurance. The biggest thing is that we've reduced flood risk to below 1% for that 150 parcels. The flood reduction benefit, so it's an avoided cost of about $15.5 million over a 50-year project life. So that's kind of the damage that we would expect in a 100-year storm before the project, $15.5 million, and about $3.5 million in flood insurance. And flood insurance continues to increase, so those numbers might be inflated or deflated now. They'd be inflated in the future. And then, you know, really eliminating disruption to residences and businesses. Other things include the seismic improvements through the new infrastructure. Everything was designed to, you know, current standards. Integrating the stream habitat enhancements to improve salmon access, habitat, and the stream function, and then providing the city with a long-term corridor monitoring and maintenance process for the creek. So a brief little thing about funding. So from 1982 or 1983, from when the project was first identified to 2012, no funding was really available or targeted. In 2012, the city received the Prop 1E grant from Department of Water Resources, so that was almost $3.5 million from the Department of Water Resources. And then the city was successful at holding on to their redevelopment funds, which many cities throughout California were not able to hold on to. But because those funds were already earmarked for a project, the city was able to hold on to $3.5 million. And then a grant for about $400,000, that kind of was the funding for all of the permitting and then design and construction of those first two phases. So then the city went back to get more funding. They were able to get some funding from CDFW's Fisheries Restoration Grant for the design of the 12th Street culvert, and then from FEMA Hazard Mitigation for the design of the Hillside Creek Project. And something to highlight for the match for the FEMA grant is the Measure E funding. So that was a critical piece, you know, pulling six, almost, yeah, a little over $600,000 from Measure E to fund that. The, you know, Hillside Creek would have been very difficult to fund that match without Measure E funds. And then the city was successful at getting the implementation grant for 12th Street through that Fisheries Restoration Grant Program with a small match, both times with Fisheries Restoration Grant of about $5,000 in staff time, and then everything else was grant-funded. So the next step's the floodplain remapping. We think it'll be maybe in the $15,000 to $20,000 range, and we'll be working with staff to kind of figure out what the scope of that is. We've done a lot of the legwork and we're really close, but that is just kind of a preliminary estimate, and then that's kind of all of Roner Creek. So thinking about the future after everything is remapped, you know, the city, we've discussed with city staff about where are there other areas of potential flooding? And what we have noticed is that on Strong's Creek, in that watershed, that mapping was done in the early 1980s and is not very accurate. So we're kind of trying to figure out, you know, where are there other hazards? Where kind of the, you know, the template that we created with Roner Creek, can that be transferred to another area? And city staff are also talking to FEMA about funding. There's technical assistance programs and various programs through the National Flood Insurance Program that could assist in the kind of preliminary analysis of remapping the floodplain and potentially some hydrology and hydraulics to start figuring out some alternatives. And that is all. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
I have a couple. In a prior study, I think before this project even got going, they had tried to research where there had been red fish beds for spawning, and nothing had ever gotten any further than 12th Street. I know they found, when they did the first portion, they did find a small trout right there below Ferbusco's. They trapped a couple of different species of fish there. Even though it goes against protocol, will there be an effort to actually have fishing game seed the creek with fish with the intention that they survive from predation and they actually have a chance to go from the creek, get established and imprinted with the creek, go out in the ocean and come back, and actually start a new strain of fish that are, in essence, attached to Roner Creek?
You know, I think now they're frowning on hatcheries and introductions and that they're trying to, I think the goal right now of a lot of the resource agencies is to create the habitat and let fish get there themselves. So kind of a slower approach, but you know, one that I think in the long term, if there's good habitat there, fish will find it. So I think that's a predominant way that the agencies are looking at this now. So this is obviously one of the first steps in making sure they can get there and improving the habitat. So I think that's the approach, but there's no plans to introduce any hatchery.
I know, I know, kids do catch established trout up in Carson Woods on Roner Creek that have been there for a long time. It'd be nice to have them somehow manage to make it down into a new habitat, but don't know. I do want to give credit to Dwayne Riggi, city manager, in the past, that actually worked on the Prop 1E grant. It was the first time north of San Francisco that any city or entity in a county that had received a grant of this type for $3.5 million. And yet, before we got raided by our past governor and destroying redevelopment, we had the money in hand to be able to accomplish what we started out with, with the intentions of doing what has been accomplished. In 1993, the cost for that bypass was $1.5 million. And so, yes, things exasperate in cost, but the end results are a fantastic project that some of the staff listened to wider and deeper. That was a mantra that was passed on, and yes, wider and deeper is better than, boy, I should have had, I should have had. So we get to sit back as residents of this city to see the culmination of the project, and we actually get to see the after-effects of the success or the need to re-mitigate some of the minor flaws, which we've already talked about underneath the feed store that got eroded away, and those are all minor things. So thank you for all of the staff that have done this. It's been a long cooperation between the citizens, the property owners, all the staff, all the agencies that sometimes that we consider our enemies, but they've been our co-partners, and we've done a lot. So thank you, everybody.
Anyone else?
I don't have a question, but a comment. Is having dealt with this on the public works side and then seeing the culmination from the council side, and, I mean, it's a remarkable project. And having seen it go from a annual nightmare to a model of engineering and planning and bringing it to completion, it's great. And the permitting agencies working with staff and with you guys at GHD, it's something to show off. And I'm proud of it from the city end of it. But if you ever want to look at, on a restoration side, Campton Creek and Mill Creek, because that field over on Lower Kenmar, I've seen adult salmon and steelhead go up that thing for spawning, and it's a, you get up in there in the summertime and you think, what self-respecting fish would want to even get close to this? So it's something to think about.
Anyone else?
I just had a couple things I wanted to point out, that there was a lot, I mean, really working with the public made this successful, and the private property owners, we were, you know, occupied people's yards for an entire summer with loud construction equipment, and it's very stressful. And so, you know, we were really pleased working with the 50 property owners. I think everything went really well. Some, you know, where we were in their yard, we definitely had issues to address, but I think this is an example of a type of project where we do a really good job and prove to the public when the city comes to do something that they do it right. So I think this project definitely did that. I think there's a lot of other benefits that, you know, you look at the number, I think that was probably estimated a few years back, you know, is a low number. You know, flood insurance costs are going up, but think about each one of those homeowners upstream of Ferbusco and those failing retaining walls. Each property owner would have to go in there. That's not something that was included in those costs, but every property with that, you know, had stabilization issues or slope stability issues, you know, we handled that with this project. So we avoided a lot of costs that would come up, you know, other things like that. The high school field now has a place to drain to. Before it was backwatered, now there's a drainage outlet, you know, another small thing, but you know, now the high school can drain properly, which was another success of this project. And I think just overall community resiliency, our street crews aren't going to be responding and closing down Fortuna Boulevard and sandbagging in front of businesses. They can work on other things that are more critical, because that's They can work on other things that are more critical because that sucked a lot of people's time and traffic control. And so hopefully we can focus on the real emergency and helping people and, and trying to fix landslides and things. So this is just one thing we won't have to worry about on a regular basis that, that takes our time away from things that really need that attention. So a lot of late nights, long weekends. I know Brett, you know, worked here during construction and monitored that for a, a lot of weekends, making sure that construction went. So he should be commended as well as Jeremy for a lot of the work that happened and city staff to put, put a lot into this. But I know that these guys put their heart and soul into this project and including helping managing the funding and the grants and doing our quarterly reports. There's so much that goes into this that you can't say. So I'm glad that we could bring this to the council and just kind of remind the community of, you know, the big achievement that we have here. And we want to do a ribbon cutting, but the time change made it so that we would have been in the dark and we didn't want to do it. Maybe next year.
I was going to add one, one last thing. In 2002, off of Alder, there was a proposed housing development that was presented in front of the council. And at that point in time, because it was in the floodplain, we actually had to turn, turn that contractor down. What's really wonderful now is because of the bypass swale that's back there and the restructuring of the FEMA floodplain, when it finally gets finalized, that, that, half of that proposed development will be able to be built. So it's some things do benefit, some things do change in a positive note. You just have to be able to remember what was then and what was now to be able to bring them to light for the public to know.
Well, thank you for coming down and going over our project. Every time I see a presentation, it just amazes me what was accomplished. So thank you. And thanks to Merritt.
I was, I was-
You worked really hard on this.
I was just going to say that Merritt started with GHD and the planning and ended this project as our city manager. So, and worked all the, the whole steps all the way through, negotiating with stubborn people, you know, and he has a way of calming people and making people feel relaxed and he had a lot to do with all of that too. So a big thank you to you, Merritt.
Kevin back there in the back row, he was one of those targets as well, so.
Yeah, Kevin's one of the unsung heroes. He, he held a lot of it together and there's a lot of people that he knows and worked with along the project and it was a, it was definitely a, a team effort and all of us put a lot of time into that. And Kevin's one of those as well. And Mike, he pulled a lot. Bob Nat, he's not here, but you know, every time something needed to be done, that wasn't a contractor's job, you know, and had to be done timely, cleared a lot of vegetation. So it was really a whole city effort and, and with our consultant.
I have one more quick question. Is there going to be a maintenance schedule set up for keeping up the work that we just did?
So right, right now, we're doing annual inspections and I think we have to do those for 10 years to assure that, you know, that the channel's working and things go. But one of the, I think the, the really good things we did with this project is anticipated all the vegetation that would grow up and made the channel big enough so that when trees and other vegetation grow in there, it's not something we have to go remove. And so right now, we're doing a walk to make sure that, you know, it's performing as functioned. And, and so we're doing that annually and if, if there are things that are needed, we take care of it, but there's no regularly scheduled maintenance that has to happen other than what we observe on our, our walks.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Well, those accomplishments are kind of hard to follow now. Anyway, oral comments from the public. If anyone would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Dale. I've lived here my whole life. Of course, I paid my don't stop at a stop sign ticket for the city. And in court last week, the judge recommended that the officer give me his live camera video and he was under oath and he told the judge that he would give me a copy. I haven't received a copy. We were in court last Monday. Maybe I should ask for it again. That's the only subject I have on that subject of a stop sign violation. I feel like a criminal. Of course, you all don't stop at stop signs neither all the time now, do we? But anyway, next subject is the corner of North Loop Road. You guys built a retaining wall there years ago and then you put sidewalks around when you did the hilltop extension. Now you guys dammed up a creek there with that retaining wall and water runs off it 365 days a year. I don't know who okayed that, to dam up a creek like that, but you guys know when we get our three or four inches of rain, that water comes off there. And I timed it, actually stopped and took a one gallon bucket. And it was putting out over 30 gallons a minute there. And if you drive over there right now, you will see that it's wet and it's wet all the time. Fire hydrant there. That water was not, I don't know how the state board okayed that, but the water wasn't channeled in the right way in a French drain or some type of other drain. Should have been put in on the other side of that retaining wall. Of course, we all remember when the retaining wall wasn't there, all that mud used to come down the hill and it'd be a couple inches thick on both sides of the road. That was the way of fixing it. It was poorly designed. Okay? So that is one, I'd say one project that the money wasn't spent as good as it should have been. But that's it. And that's probably going to be a problem because you got houses sliding off the hill right above it. And putting the retaining wall up did change the water level because I've owned property on Loop Road my whole life. But anyway, that's it. And I think it's something you guys should take a look at. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mine, mine, mine.
Dottie Riffenberg, do you want me to give my address? Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't share with you. We had a wonderful teacher at Fortuna High. Her name was Pam Halsted. Jeremy, did you have Pam?
I did not.
Karen could actually speak about this better than I, but Pam came to Fortuna High, had a passion for science and used Roanoke Creek as her curriculum for the high school. Public high school, teacher giving hours after school, kids so interested, had Saturday meetings, monitoring, learning about Roanoke Creek and how it operated. Do you, Karen, do you know when Pam came to our high school? It had to be in the late 80s or early 90s. Am I right? Anyway, her whole, she had no curriculum, no directions, no sheets telling her step one, two, three to do such an event. And it was a hands-on learning that kids like having. So I wanted to share that with the proclamation and the progress that's been made in, in our creeks. You know of Pam Halsted and her work?
I've worked with her from the city side with the Fortuna Creeks Project and vegetation and trash and we used to get car batteries out of there and everything, but it got cleaned up and it's much better.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dottie.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Sean DeVries. I'm here tonight to introduce myself, say hi to everybody here in Fortuna. I am running for supervisor in District Two. Why? Why would anyone do that to themselves? Well, I'm a little bit concerned about the future of our district here. I've taken a look at the budget and we lost $120 million from one year to the next. That's over a 20% drop. That front page of the budget goes on to say buckle up, everybody, you're about to start losing services. Now, here in Fortuna, you guys, we all have it well together. Excuse me, we have it well together, but in other parts of Southern Humboldt, they don't quite have as much structure and they need a little more help. So that's more or less why, why I'm running is to try and address the financial concerns of the county. I think most of it came as a mishandling of cannabis and I know that Fortuna is not the biggest fan of cannabis, but be that as it may. It has been a solid economic engine for the region for the past three or four decades. And the mishandling is the direct cause of the loss of sales tax revenue. And here we are facing a year with reduced services in a region that is already on the outskirts of the county and receives reduced services. We've had power outages recently and I've been inspired by Fortuna's efforts to implement recycling. You were the first in the county to have green waste recycling and that's, that's incredibly impressive. I would like to see us here move towards microgrid research and investigating alternative power sources. It's not quite here yet, but if we take some time and, and invest into the infrastructure here, I think that'd be a good place to start. Also, we could work with law enforcement to increase local enforcement of registrations, vehicle registrations, which would drive greater state funding to repair local roads. Right now, all of the SB 1 funding is going to Highway 101, which is nice. We all need to get north and we all need to get south, but there are areas of the county that receive repairs to smaller roads, ancillary roads, and I think we could get money for that here as well. So really, overall, I just wanted to come and say hi and introduce myself and let you know I was running. And anybody have any questions while I'm up here? No? Thank you very much for your time, council. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have three items. City Council Minutes, Report of Disbursements, and City Council Reports from the League of California Cities. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I'd like to pull number three.
Okay. What do you got, Dean?
I just sort of talked with Tammy before the meeting started and I asked why her report, which was obligatory, as we talked about the last council meeting. And unfortunately, it's not there and there's a reason, but if we are going to request that of all the candidates and members that went to the conference, then I'd like to see that next month, if it's all possible. So we do have a report and there's a follow-through. So that's, that's my only request.
All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We accept the consent calendar, items one through three.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to city council business. Our first item is a public hearing to consider a request to abandon a 50-foot public road and utility easement created by the Springville Estates subdivision, APNs 202-082-059 and 202-071-087. The applicant is Abe Stevens, Resolution 2019-34. Staff report, please.
LaShori, our Deputy Director of Community Development, will be providing the staff report for this item.
Thanks, Merritt. Honorable Mayor and council members. So Abe Stevens, the applicant, has submitted an application to abandon a 50-foot right-of-way that is on his property. The right-of-way was created in a 1998 subdivision map, the Springville Estates subdivision, which I'll show you on the overhead. So the, the aerial that's on there now shows the property boundaries. It shows it as, that's the parcel quest data, but it's, it's actually one parcel, not two. It's 5.6 acres. And you can see it's on the north side of Redwood Way there. So this kind of just gives you the topography and the location. Oh, not used to this. Here we go. So this shows a kind of a better location relative to adjoining properties. And you can see that, so it's the Springville Estates there and the project is this parcel here. And you can see that there, this is really like the last vacant land in this larger area. And I just went ahead and did kind of a, show the relative development surrounding it. Longdale to the west, Joseph Street area to the north, Sinistro to the east. And then you can see the Brazil property is another vacant property to the southeast. And then the Fitzie development was recently approved. So here's Redwood Way. So this kind of shows on the next map, on the subdivision map, and I'm going to show you the, you know, this is really like the last infill piece and there, the subdivision created some connectivity and utilities for the larger area. So that kind of comes into play a little bit when, as we're considering this right-of-way. You can see Roanoke Creek here, I'm sorry, not Roanoke Creek, Strong's Creek to the southeast. And then Second Avenue extends, runs east-west and the subdivision map did create a right-of-way for, to connect that, that portion of Second Avenue. So this is kind of switching the orientation. Second Avenue is running, oh, sorry, I'm not used to this. Second Avenue is running north-south here, so I had to switch the orientation. And this is the Stevens parcel, here's Redwood Way, Second Avenue. And this would be another connection, this, so this is a subdivision map that created, created these smaller parcels that did get built out. And then it created these three larger parcels that, you know, that, those are the ones that were shown on the aerial. And it created, basically it serves as a master plan that created the road layout to, you know, create connectivity through the whole site. So part of Berry Creek, this is subdivided now, there are homes there. And you can see the intent was to create an extension that looped around and then came back to connect to Shamrock. And it also intended to create a connection with Second Avenue. So that matches the pattern of that whole larger Longdale and Sinistro areas. So the request here is to abandon this portion of that right-of-way. And a couple of reasons, I'll show you the wetland map. The drainage off of Shamrock did, you know, flows along the lower portion, the western portion of these three properties and it, you know, and that's been probably for the last 30 years that this has been vacant and kind of everything squeezed in around it. So that did create a drainage and over time, it did create a wetlands, which has been mapped by the Army Corps and they did issue a preliminary jurisdictional determination on that wetland. So that kind of blocks a little bit of the development potential here and kind of minimizes the, the density unless the property owners came together or, or they could individually do a wetlands mitigation, you know, and at some point. That is an option. So a couple of other things on this map, there is an existing sewer easement, a 20-foot sewer easement through a portion of that 50-foot right-of-way. It does serve the Guido and Sinistro area to the east. So that 20-foot easement would remain. There is a one-foot non-vehicular access strip here that would remain and that, the intent of that is to prohibit or minimize access points off of Redwood Way, which is a higher speed arterial road. The applicant did request a, an encroachment permit. His plan is for a single-family residence. He has submitted a building permit and so an encroachment permit has been issued, basically a temporary, a long-term temporary encroachment permit that could be revoked and would be if the property were developed with higher density, they would probably, you know, then they would get access off of the right-of-way to the, to the north. So this serves as a master plan, you know, to show connectivity. The purpose of the master plan is to promote orderly development and maintain that public access to this parcel. So as these other two larger parcels, these two get developed, I mean, our concern is really to maintain access for this parcel through here. And also, one of the conditions of approval for the abandonment is for a dedication of an irrevocable offer of dedication for a 45-foot radius cul-de-sac as a turnaround to serve development, you know, higher density development on adjoining property. So, you know, in exchange for eliminating that 50-foot easement, you know, still a contribution towards the overall circulation by having this cul-de-sac developed, not currently, but you know, in the future as it's needed, either by the property to the north or, or if this parcel is ever developed beyond the single-family proposal that's current. So, you know, with the five and a half acres- So, you know, with the five-and-a-half acres, at some point in the future, there could be development, you know, the property owner doesn't, isn't interested in that now, but there's certainly that potential, and our concern is just to maintain that option, you know, not to preclude, not to allow a development that is going to preclude any future development. So, you know, we want to see the potential for the highest and best use, which would be the density under the general plan for the R-16 zone. So, let's see, so this is the wetland map. This is not the, the Army Corps determination map, but this one shows that east-west Second Avenue connection, and this is the property, the applicant's property, and you can see that the wetland is really just on the western portion of the property, and this is the connection here. And then here is Strong's Creek. And then this shows that same right-of-way map with just kind of an estimate of the wetland So, the property owner intends to build, oops, what did I do? Along Strong's Creek, and there are a couple of things going on there. He did submit a couple of letters, those were included in your staff report, and he objects to the, the 45-foot radius cul-de-sac, and he feels that it was going to infringe on the location of his home in this area. There is, you know, with Strong's Creek, there is a 20, 50-foot creek setback. There's also a FEMA floodplain in that vicinity. Couple of things to keep in mind is that this 50-foot right-of-way would be eliminated, and that will also eliminate a 20-foot yard setback that otherwise would be required. So, he's gaining, you know, this whole area 50 feet by the length of this easement, and also gaining some buildable area by eliminating a 20-foot setback. So, it's hard, it's been hard to evaluate the concerns of his property in that area, and we really haven't had, with this building permit, it really doesn't show all of those easements and setbacks accurately mapped. So, the other thing is that there's an option, you know, he has the ability to propose a different layout. You know, we're proposing the 45-foot radius cul-de-sac, but, you know, there's some alternative designs that could be considered that will allow a turnaround or, you know, even a portion of a road with possibly a radius or a cul-de-sac, you know, kind of shifted over. So, there are some things that could be designed, just keep that in mind as you're considering the, the proposal. Let's see, other than that, I'll just, a couple of housecleaning things. The abandonment is under the authority of the California Streets and Highways Code, Section 8300 and subsequent sections. It does give the City Council the approval authority on the street vacation. The Planning Commission is required to consider the general plan conformance of the vacation or the abandonment, and they did make that finding at their meeting on October 22nd. I included those general plan policies in your staff report as an attachment, just for your information. And basically, it calls out, the general plan has infill policies that support, you know, this kind of infill development in the city. This is an R-16 zone, so, you know, it is intended for higher density, not taking into consideration the, the wetland that does remove some of the land from development, obviously, and includes, the general plan includes connectivity policies and then just planning, overall planning for infrastructure that serves existing and proposed development. And utility agencies reviewed the project and didn't provide any comments. Fire District, City Surveyor, and the City Engineer all reviewed it, and the result is the five conditions that are in the resolution, the main one being the dedication of the 45-foot radius cul-de-sac. And the other conditions are really in processing, giving staff the authority to record the abandonment with the Humboldt County Recorder's Office. Merritt, did you have anything to add? Okay, then I'll pass that back to the planning, or the City Council.
Okay, I think this is going to be a discussion, so I need like a one-minute break, two-minute break.
And while she is gone, though.
This subdivision has, so the list that you're talking about is in the monthly reports, that is divided, you know, in the schedule of all of the activities. Those are for maps that are approved but not recorded, so the subdivision isn't actually created. The parcels are not created until it gets recorded, but this map, the Springville Estates map, has been recorded. It was reported in 1998, and you can see the, the book and page number, and on the other sheets, you would see the Humboldt County Recorder's signature and different information like that.
Right.
This one's been completed.
Thank you.
You know, if I could just add one thing to that, to the response to that question, one of the most difficult things, you can see there's three parcels here, one of which is, or four, one of which has been developed, but three, but the hard thing on this project, we're not seeing on other projects, is these roads, right-of-ways were dedicated to cities. So, they are existing right-of-ways that weren't built, and now they're encumbered by wetlands. So, it puts us in a unique situation of how do we deal with existing city right-of-ways that there is no road on? And this is another good reason why you don't accept those, and you might get an irrevocable offer of dedication rather than accepting a right-of-way when those are done.
Thank you. That's a really good point. Those, those are public right-of-ways that are dedicated to the, just not improved, which is not really a good situation.
Okay, I wanted to add something else, just from my personal awareness. In 2002, a portion of that property, the closest to Redwood Way, was actually a retention basin. After that 2002 event, that was landfillled. There were loads of dirt being brought in to raise up the height of the land. So, I guess you could probably say, prior to the awareness of habitat restoration and protection, that was filled in to make it more palatable and buildable. So, you see that little, that little road that comes off of Redwood Way, which actually has been, there's a gate and there's an entrance, and it's gravelled, you know, there's, there's been intentions to do something in there. That was, that was, that was full of water, and it would have been considered part of the habitat if it had never been changed. So, what you see is what you get, and there's other places in town that the same thing's been done since 2002, but that's not, that's not the facts that need to be brought forward. It's disappointing that, that because of habitat, the value and the potential, monetary potential of the land is diminished, and it restricts you. So, yeah, you're sort of, you're, you're, you have to find high ground that you can build on, otherwise, the entire parcel becomes fallow and doesn't have any value. So, I can see the owner of the property wanted to do something beneficial.
Anyone else?
Having dealt with Redwood, I mean, with the creek over there, between Redwood Way and Ronerville Road, that bank has sloughed off numerous times, at times blocking the creek. Is there a setback being retained along there, or is that property buildable to the hinge point, the top of bank?
So, we're not talking about, so right now, there's a building permit that's been submitted, but this item tonight is really just on the abandonment of the right-of-way, but
Okay.
A 50-foot setback from the top of bank will be maintained in one of the conditions for this building permit.
Okay.
But that, again, it's not a building permit that you guys are hearing, it's just the reduction of the right-of-way.
The sewer easement's being maintained, that was the second thing, and I saw it in the resolution, and...
Anyone else have questions?
I have a question about the thought process from staff regarding the cul-de-sac. What's its desired outcome?
I, I could probably speak to that. You know, you know, it's my opinion as a city engineer that a cul-de-sac is a better turnaround than a hammerhead. We have, you know, a hammerhead is like a T-shaped area that's paving, and, you know, where we see those is where you have potential for road extensions, but what it looks like is, you know, a, a T shape, and we see people park on them, and they're less than ideal, and they don't feel like a normal city street. So, what I'd like to see as the standard for future subdivisions and dead-end roads is that we have a cul-de-sac, because it's a more inviting way for people to turn around. And so, one of the thoughts for this one is that we're really trying to be consistent. You know, the T-shaped parcel in the middle, we've been talking with that property owner who's proposing a subdivision right now, and, you know, the homes that come off of Berry Creek, one of the conditions for them, if they did want to abandon that right-of-way, we've been discussing with them, is that they would put in a cul-de-sac. And so, here, where we're looking at that red area that would be an abandonment of a 50-foot right-of-way, we want to make sure that because of that right-of-way will be gone, and there, you know, the future ability to turn around and reconnect a second will be gone, that there is a proper turnaround, you know, at the end of that connection of that parcel. So, I think it's just a desire for a long-term, you know, the ability to, in the future with development, construct a suitable turnaround on that parcel. Really to serve the, you know, the adjacent areas as well as this parcel.
How, how does the cul-de-sac serve this parcel?
There could be multiple driveways that come off one cul-de-sac, and, you know, also, you know, there, there could be another configuration. We're just asking for an irrevocable offer of dedication. If the applicant comes later and says, you know what, I really want to put a road through, you know, then we could reconsider what's going to happen there, but if we don't include some type of proper turnaround in the right-of-way for it, we'll have a dead end, and other spot, there's other spots, we have that in the city, and it really doesn't function well. People have to back up in people's yards. We have that right now at the end of Berry Creek Ave, and what we need is a proper turnaround, and so that's, that's our opinion of what a proper turnaround would be. And it doesn't have to be right at the end of the road, right where he wants to build. You could put a 90-degree in the road, and you could have an offset cul-de-sac. So, we're not specifying the design other than, we are specifying a radius, a minimum radius, which we apply across the city. So, you know, they could, you know, extend the road a little bit, have a 90-degree bend, and then have an offset cul-de-sac if they wanted to preserve the area that they're looking at for their building permit. So, there are options, we just haven't seen any layouts provided by the applicant.
Having a hard time seeing where that would go and how it'd encroach onto his property. It would be basically going across the parcel that's the T-shaped lot and his parcel? Is that...
It would, it would not be at all on the T-shaped parcel. The road would extend, and there'd be a 90-foot diameter circle somewhere.
Is that circle indicating that?
No.
No.
But you can look at the width of the 50-foot roadway. It's not that far off, but it's probably a little bit bigger, but the roadway width outlined in red is 50 feet, so it would be twice that, and so there could be different shapes. But, you know, again, removing that road would return, would, would eliminate kind of a through road, and it would instead replace it with a turnaround. And so, I think what we want to make sure is that there is a proper turnaround, being that we won't have that right-of-way there to, to use. And again, it gets complicated because these roads were taken into the city, they were, they were dedicated and accepted by the city, and they weren't built. So, now we're trying to pretend they're real roads and what they might be, and, and so in this one, you know, they can kind of retreat and abandon the right-of-way. We're agreeable to that, but again, our, her, her whole effort is to make sure there's a proper turnaround for that whole neighborhood, not just this one parcel. It has less utility for this parcel probably than the adjacent parcels, if that's your question.
But isn't it also, if this parcel is, right now, we want to build one single home, but if this parcel was further subdivided, basically, it's landlocked without that cul-de-sac, because we have that non-vehicular access on Redwood Way, so unless we open that up to a, a road or a driveway and we take that away, then we have nowhere to go.
Right. It, it, it will be a dead end with this abandonment.
That's a good point. Why would that be a, I'm, I'm forgetting the words, but the access onto Redwood Way is revocable? I don't know if the lender's going to lend if it's revocable.
The access onto Redwood, so there is no, there is no encroachment permit for a temporary access. What the applicant is asking for is a temporary encroachment permit, and so I think we, you know, from a staff perspective, we're agreeable to that for a single-family residence for a limited duration until the adjacent property develops, but that's not something that we want to see for the long term. It's one of those tricky things where there was a master plan and a road network that was designed, and either we throw the whole thing out or start from scratch, or we try to, you know, maintain, you know, the, the flow that was intended with the adaptations to account for the protection of wetlands, if that makes sense. But, you know, so our thinking right now is allow him temporary access for the single-family residence until such a time as the adjacent property where, which is in the center of the parcel develops, and then their access could be there, and that could be preserved. And it's really just to continue with that original road planning provided, which is to have one less intersection on Redwood Way, which has higher speeds, and to reduce potential vehicle conflicts at an intersection.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public? Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, please. Hello, Mayor, Council members. Liz Merritt, hi. So, I'm Abe Stevens, I'm the applicant. That's my property. I am hoping to build a home there. The, kind of, the, the reason that they're talking about is where I want to build is kind of constrained by this current easement. Because so much of the property is in the flood zone, and there are the wetlands with the 50-foot setback on, from that, as well as 50-foot setback from Strong's Creek, and a 20-foot setback from this easement that you see in red, there are quite a few, or actually, not very many spots to actually build. And where I want to build is kind of in-between where that easement is and Strong's Creek, which, when this was originally created, was, you know, expected to have, you know, like 20 something, it was going to be like a 20-lot subdivision, and it was intended that there would be buildable area there between the creek and the road, but at that time, that was a 25-foot setback from the creek, creek bank. So, it's basically unbuildable in the spot that I'd like to build in. There are a couple other buildable spots that I, I would consider less desirable. So, since, since that easement is there, and the city, you know, has kind of made a, you know, a valid point that I can't build within the setback of the in-existing easement, you know, I, you know, have applied to abandon it. And I think the, the area where we've kind of, you know, left to agree to disagree is are the conditions to build the, the cul-de-sac, which from my perspective, obviously, I am just looking at it as a homeowner, I just want to, you know, I want to, it's a single lot, you know, it's an existing lot, I'm not subdividing. You know, the, the city is preserving the access to my lot, so abandoning this easement's not going to landlock me. And the, but, so from my perspective, you know, I see, you know, the requirement to put in a cul-de-sac is a challenge, for one. If I put it at, you know, where the access comes into my road, it wouldn't fit there because that would, that would affect where I want to build as well as it wouldn't be permitted with the 50 foot, 50-foot setback from Strong's Creek. So, it would require extending the road into my property and then, you know, putting the cul-de-sac, you know, that. And so, I see that, you know, just as, you know, there's just the burden of the time and expense of hiring an engineer or surveyor to, you know, prepare and set that up, as well as the possibility that I could have, you know, a public road and a cul-de-sac on my own property, and there's always a question of, you know, the liability, question of people coming on my property, which, you know, I, I can understand the city's logic. They don't want just a dead-end road. I, I'm sure that's less than ideal. So, I think from my perspective, I'll probably honor whatever the, the council's decision is and go with it, but, you know, it, just as a single, a single lot owner trying to build, you know, a home, it, you know, it seems like a, you know, an extra condition that, in my opinion, doesn't, isn't a fair trade for removing the, the easement, just because the current easement is not really practical for, it was, it's a tenet purpose, which was to provide access to a future subdivision as well as connectivity to the rest of the development, just because of the wetlands block it, you know, block the route. So, I guess, I don't know, that's... of the wetlands block its, you know, block the route. So, I guess, I don't know, that's pretty much, you know, my main justification. Any questions from my perspective?
I would just say that people coming onto your property, once that cul-de-sac was built, it becomes a city street and it becomes city property. So it wouldn't be a liability for you.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, I guess I underst, yeah, I mean, I guess the liability part is maybe that's not a concern, but there's still the concern of, you know, why is there a street and a cul-de-sac on my property when there aren't any other, you know, parcels to serve?
It's for future parcels, though. You could move away and now someone else buys your house and they want to split it into four lots.
Sure.
How do we access it? How do we do that?
So, yeah, and so that would be, so that would be another thing that I would probably disagree with on the, with the city staff, is that by keeping an easement or replacing this easement with a new one would preserve the development future, you know, for future subdivision, which, you know, from my perspective, you know, I don't see anything that would prevent me or some future, you know, property owner from dedicating a new road and a cul-de-sac at that time, once we know exactly where and how many lots that we want to subdivide on the property.
Can I just make one clarifying point and just to respond is that we're not asking for the dedication. We're asking for the irrevocable offer of dedication. So there's an existing needed right-of-way there now. So people technically could walk across that property and be within the city right-of-way, but we're asking specifically for an irrevocable offer of dedication. So it is not a city right-of-way, but we can, we can, that it's irrevocably offered to dedicate so that it technically would be private property till we accept it. So it would be a better situation with what we're proposing from a trespass or liability standpoint. You wouldn't have people have the right to be on there unless that was accepted and it wouldn't be accepted until it was going to be built.
The other part of that is if the easement is eliminated without something compensating to, you know, for future development, the placement of his home could preclude any future dedication by being in, too close to, you know, setbacks or right-of-way without having, you know, really good vision or plan of what he wants to do.
So building, eliminating the easement and building one home and with no future plans for anything in the future, one house would kill the entire development of that parcel. You'd be, you'd be stopping it dead in its tracks unless you came forward with something completely new that was redesigned and reintroduced. In your letter, you mentioned that you bought the land seven years ago and you've waited another period of seven years to finally come forward to want to build a home?
I've only owned this for a couple of years.
Okay. I want to say the letter mentions seven years of ownership before?
I think it was on, it was for sale for quite, I may have mentioned how long it was for sale.
Okay.
Just it. But, yeah, I think, I guess I would see that as, since I'm the owner of the property, you know, I can inhibit, you know, development, you know, or subdivision, you know, just based on my choice.
So you, you would have?
Regardless of whether I built a house.
You would have, you would have one home and you'd be paying property tax on the remainder of the undeveloped in the meantime.
Sure.
So is that, is that financially logical or you just want the house?
Well, I think for the short term, I just want to build a house, you know, just want to move and enjoy a little more space longer term.
You'll have a lot of space.
Longer term, I definitely see the possibility of, you know, subdividing. I mean, there would be some financial incentive to actually do that. And, you know, I guess, I guess what, you know, what I wanted, what I was hoping to avoid was trying to design that subdivision now and, you know, to know where to put the street and this cul-de-sac and try and figure out, you know, if I'm going to do a minor subdivision or major subdivision and how, how everything's going to be configured. And so until that time, it seems that it would be a little premature to do that.
And, and your, yeah, the single-house infrastructure is smaller. If you plan on doing anything larger or adding another house, if you sell a parcel, dedicated parcel, then that infrastructure would actually have to be enlarged. My question will be, are you, when you do, if we do do this easement abandonment, are you going to oversize the size of all your infrastructure so that you can have the plan already in place so you don't have to have another complete set of larger infrastructure installed at an extra cost?
No, I mean, besides this easement, you know, or if the city does require me to put in a new easement with a cul-de-sac, that would be the only thing I would be doing, you know, to plan for a future subdivision. Everything else, I mean, the sewer is there already.
Yeah, all the utilities and everything, all the infrastructure is sized to make an actual development much larger than what is going in there.
Yeah.
So he didn't have to do anything along those lines.
If you chose not to be proactive, if you just chose to do the minimum, then that's your.
Sure. I mean, but that, yeah, I mean, that's, and that's the reason I'm here. I want to do the minimum. Just for the sake of, of, you know, just cost and time, really. I mean, this, just because it's such an expensive process, just building a house, I just don't want to spend the cost and time doing it, even though I understand the logic. But, one other thought, though, and, you know, Merritt had mentioned the hammerhead as being a less desirable, less desirable option. That is something I have talked to the neighbor to the north, Bill, who I think he's anticipating a subdivision on his property. You know, I think we, I think we have talked about that being, you know, an option that we might ask the city to consider, just because that would fit at the end of the road where it comes to my property. And that would kind of negate the need for me to plan out where the future road and cul-de-sac would be. And I think we would, you know, we would, we would work collaboratively, collaboratively to kind of position that and, you know, if the city was, you know, agreeable to that sort of compromise.
There, there is a hammerhead at the, at the end of Boone Street here and off of School Street. So it does exist.
Because, I mean, alternatively, I mean, I think also one thing that, you know, the neighbors would be concerned about is that if you guys did agree with my logic and didn't require a turnaround, then that, you know, he would fear that the city would, you know, require him to put one in his subdivision. And, which I also don't know that I would, I mean, I agree with the, the, the logic of, you know, having a spot to turn around, but still, if there was a cul-de-sac just immediately to the north of me, but then I subdivided in the future, it'd be a little bit redundant when I'm going to build one down the road anyway. So, you know, in our opinion, I think the, a hammerhead turnaround would be a decent, short-term compromise until, you know, at some point in the future that I subdivide.
Just one clarification. We're not asking him to build anything. We're asking for an irrevocable offer of dedication. So a hammerhead might be a perfectly fine temporary solution that could be put in temporarily, but not long-term. That's what, that's what our, our goal is. And I think we just really want to make sure we're planning the whole infrastructure. Again, we're just looking at right-of-way abandonment. We're not looking at subdivision. We're not looking at utilities. This, this one action looks just at the right-of-way abandonment. So what we're trying to do is to make sure that we have a suitable turnaround for the future, not just to serve this parcel, but to serve the adjacent parcel so that when people drive into a dead-end street, they have a, a nice spot to turn around. You know, you bring up the example of the Boone Street subdivision. There's two roads that are supposed to extend to that. That's temporary. But the reasons that we don't want to see, you know, hammerheads is because people park on them. They think they're, they look like a parking area. They'll park RVs there and other things and it's hard to enforce and keep people off of those. But a cul-de-sac, it's not the same way. So I think they're a better long-term solution. So it may be temporary that one could go in there, but again, we just want to preserve that right-of-way in the future planning and not just think about one house. But the general, the planning commission approved this with the understanding that that would be there for general, general plan and zoning ordinance conformance, because I think the under, the expectation of the planning commission is that this could be built out to have a higher density consistent with the city's general plan in the future. And so that's what we're trying to protect with this one requirement that we have for this right-of-way abandonment.
When, when this map was recorded, Liz, what date was on it?
1998.
1998? So, yeah, that's been 20 years. The likelihood of having something done on a major blow it out and build houses gangbuster is probably unlikely for another 20 years. So, you know, yeah, we're addressing now and now's the time to think about it. And if some miracle were to happen and you, you decide, oh, it's time to make tons of money, I'm going to start developing and then it's going to be your choice. But, yeah, another 20 years is probably likely.
I'm expecting the wetlands aren't going anywhere. So I, I'm sure if I do, when I get to the point to want to subdivide, it would still probably be a more limited subdivision just because of the.
Habitat.
All right. Abe, I'm going to ask you to take a seat unless we have more questions for you. Anyone else from the public have any comments on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And if we need to call the applicant back up, we can. All right. Any thoughts, comments?
Thinking, you know, being forward-thinking and planning ahead is reminding, we have a street in Fortuna. I think it's Shields Lane where the headlights from the cars on Shields Lane as they're going to their houses are shining into the back of the houses in the Baxter subdivision because the road just, for a long time, there was only a chain link fence in there and it just shone right on the backs of the houses because there was no provision made when they, when one was done for the other. And I believe that Shields Lane was there before the subdivision was. So it's just, this is the opportunity to think ahead and avoid those kind of issues. And like you said, it's only a offer, irrevocable offer of dedication. So we're planning ahead for the eventuality, which will come, to build that, add for the other lots. So in the meantime, you can have what you desire. But we're looking ahead to being able to build that access for the other ones to avoid the outcomes that we see in various places in Fortuna.
Any other comments or questions from Merritt?
I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. He doesn't have to build a cul-de-sac at this point?
No. We want to make sure we reserve the space. So if adjacent development or future development on this parcel has that space available, we're not requiring that it be built at this time. And his building permit would only require a driveway. And we are considering a temporary driveway from Redwood Way because it would just be one residence. But the requirement that, this is a, we're getting into the building permit, but in the future, the act, the primary access would be from.
So basically that just holds the easement for access for subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other things, comments, questions, thoughts? Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this project. I had questions because I, I can see it from one side and the perspective of the property owner wanting to have access and rights to his entire property. But I also understand and appreciate the, the city's forethought and planning. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the abandonment of a proportion of a 50-foot public road and utility easement shown as parcel A on the Springville Estates subdivision map.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is consider approving a supplemental budget request for $15,000 for nuisance abatement activities within the city. Staff report?
Okay, so I'm bringing this item back. You may have recalled, I believe it was the October 7th council meeting, I was questioned about how much money we'd need for nuisance abatement by Mayor Pro Tem Trent. Well, I've already exceeded the $15,000. We had one, let me go back. The, this supplemental budget request is for $15,000 for nuisance abatement purposes within the city. On October 7th, the council approved the creation of a revolving fund from which to pay the cost of nuisance abatement with initial budget allocation of 15,000. We initiated our first nuisance abatement activity on, at 2386 Acacia Drive. And I will say that our nuisance abatement officer has taken on, you know, the biggest nuisance abatements we have. There was a part of the lot that was vegetated and the cleanup was very extensive. It required hazardous materials technicians to do. There was a lot of sharps and needles and other things from the activity that happened there. And I, I believe we ended up removing four 40-yard dumpsters. If you look at the amount of trash there, it was really a small landfill and it likely went on for decades where they were storing their trash. So we initially had a budget of $12,500, $12,500 to remove all that trash. We ended up spending approximately $20,000. And so that was within my approval authority to approve the additional funds. But I, I want to have council's approval for additional budget should we need to undertake additional nuisance abatement activities. I'm still asking for a small amount. I think it's important that the council has a handle because these will be general funds that back up these nuisance abatement if, you know, for, for a long period of time until which we can do a lien or a foreclosure unless the property owner steps up and pays it. I just want to make sure the council's aware of what's, what's happening there. So with, with regard to the financial impact, the municipal code, Fortunabated Subdivision Code allows for costs to the city for abatement that are not paid by the property owner to be assessed against the property and added to the regular tax bills. If unpaid, the city can proceed with foreclosing on the property as allowed by law. The general fund will be responsible to temporarily cure cash deficits between the time that expenses are incurred and revenues are received. And in cases, that foreclosure on properties required, it may take significantly longer to collect. It could be a couple of years before we see money back on this. So this expenditure could be a long-term and it could be, end up being bad debt that the city ends up eating. There's a copy of the supplemental budget request attached to the staff report. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions if the council has them.
Questions?
The Measure E money that we set aside in our, our general fund reserves, how much did we set aside?
For nuisance abatement?
No, just putting it back into the fund. You know, one of the intentions was to build back the, the city's general fund so that we would not be taking out of it, diminishing it.
This year, I think there was approximately 25,000 above and beyond the expenditures. But my guess is when we get to the end of the year that our expenses will come in less and so we'll have put in more than that. So, you know, our finance director and I think the council's pretty conservative with the budget. So I expect that we'll end up putting more, but I think the amount we had was around 20, 25,000.
I'm, I'm stubborn. I, when somebody does something wrong and violates the letter of the law and negatively impacts our city, there are no mountains I will not climb. There are no hardships that I will not endure when I know what right is right and what wrong is wrong. We did an abatement on Spring Street many, many years ago and the city actually became owners of two parcels. No, it's not the intention of the city to become property owners and have that on our, our acknowledgement of APNs. But the consequences of somebody doing something wrong have to have repercussions. So, yes, we get to put this on their property tax statement for next year. So it'll show up in, in 2020 to pay 2021. If it takes 10 years to have us get our money back, then so is 10 years. I refuse to give up on this. And if we end up becoming the owners of a lot on Acacia, guess what? The city's going to own a lot and we're going to have a value. It is far more than $20,000 of what we had to pay. So my determined stand is we continue on the same pathway. We, we attack all the code, we attack all the code violations that have been rampant for the last 20 years in the city. Unfortunately, this one got to be the pinnacle of, oh my God, we never even imagined it was that bad. And, and it came to fruition because of the gentleman being murdered and it went from there. We actually found out about it. If we have to do $15,000 and it's for the good of the city and it protects 12,000 of us, so be it. That health, safety and welfare come first and that's our obligation. So as for our code enforcement person, I've said it before and I'll say it again, he is doing such an awesome job. You know, if you're breaking the law, folks, look out because he's coming. He's going to get you and he's going to bring you right to the surface and we're going to solve your violation. So, yeah. Madam Mayor, I hope I have spoken on the same level as everybody else, is that, that we need to continue on the same pathway with the same aggressiveness. And if it costs us money to do so, we'll do so.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public have any comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Do I get to do it?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. At this point in time, I'd like to approve a supplemental budget request. a supplemental budget request for the amount of $15,000 for the nuisance abatement activities occurring in the wonderful city of Fortuna.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, moving on to City Manager's report.
Okay, so we have a lot to talk about, and I wasn't at the last meeting, so I might use a little bit more time for some of the things to report from prior to that, but I think one of the things that stands out is we had the public safety power shut-offs during the last, you know, since the last council meeting, and I would just like to emphasize that our staff really responded in a meaningful and appropriate way, it required our wastewater and water crews to work on a 24-hour cycle, so everybody adjusted their schedules, and it takes a lot to move into one of those schedules, and then when a new shut-off is anticipated or a different time, you go off the schedule and on the schedule and off, so we, you know, the unknowing of, you know, whether it was going to actually happen, and then planning for it to happen and then have it not happen, it was, it created a lot of stress for city staff across the board, but we kept water flowing, we kept sewer moving downhill, so anyway, we had no incidents, and we had good police coverage, so I think the city performed rather well, we did have some difficulties with our generator power going on and off, so we lost our phones for just a little while at City Hall, but we figured out how to deal with that and what the problem is, and we're working on fixing that, we did end up giving a short-term lease to PG&E for the use of the pavilion parking lot, and they had set up a warming station, a charging station, and wifi for people, and that was pretty well-used, we stopped by and looked at that, so I think that went well, one of the things that came out of this is the governor released $75 million for cities and for local municipalities to be able to deal with the power safety shut-offs, with half of that being reserved for cities, so we are going to be applying for some of that money, things that we're going to be asking for as a generator for the pavilion that could also serve the other parks building, secondary fuel storage for our police, they ended up having to refuel up at the Rona Ville Airport at the county's facility, we had some good cooperation from the county, but having all of our fuel storage at the treatment plant right now is diesel, and it's not gasoline, and so we want to make sure we have a good supply, and then also, we want to have a generator service at our Public Works Building where our general services operates out of, right now, our wastewater side is served, but not our general services, and our general services responds to streetlights and other things, so I think these are a good practice for a real emergency, we've come up with a few ideas for resiliency, the other one we want is to wire our streetlights for small generators so that we can have those operational during an outage, so we're going to ask for those things and put together a grant, they're due on November 12th. We closed escrow on 280 12th Street, so we received a check last week on the 31st, and so that part of the city's history is closed, we're no longer going to build a police station at 280 12th Street, we sold it to Kevin Bradley, who's the owner of Creations, who has already a successful business in McKinleyville and one in Riedel, and he seems very optimistic about how much work that they'll have there, and he expects to employ, I think he said a dozen people, so he's going to be fixing it up, putting some sidewalk and landscaping behind the sidewalk, and doing some really nice things to the building to make it appear nice, so I know he has a pretty high standard when it comes to buildings and grounds, and so I think that building's going to look good, and we'll, we should see a successful business coming into that, not just, we're getting rid of a building, but we're also going to be welcoming a new business, so I'm looking forward to working with them and seeing their building permits come across. We will be pursuing a sale of 320, which is the old Parlato's building, it's currently double-d stake, we've been talking with Debbie Chisholm, the owner of that business, she did win a lottery, win an auction for a liquor license, so she, that was one of the main obstacles as she was operating with a city liquor license, so I talked to her, we're hoping to have a framework for a sale established by the end of the year, and something that I can bring the council for consideration. Just a quick update on 2600 Newburgh, the property that the city's currently escrow in escrow on and looking at for potential as a new police facility, we're working on, with our architect finalizing the needs assessment and space requirements, we've had good, we've had good input from our police, we have sergeants, officers, dispatch, we have a number of people from the police, I really am viewing it like their project, and so we're doing our best to include members from our police department so that they can see what we're coming up with and help to steer that project, and that they can, you know, we can really get their buy-in that it's going to be a facility that they need and will meet the long-term needs of the department, we already talked about the nuisance abatement on Acacia, again, there's more, but hopefully, they're not all that big and that expensive, but we're going to be continuing to go after some of the worst ones that we've had complaints about that haven't been dealt with in the past, I'd like to thank our finance staff, we went live with our new finance software, so accounts payroll and payroll went live in addition to the general ledger, which had been done prior to the last council meeting, and you'll also notice that in the register and the council, that there's a table that actually breaks it down by which fund those expenses came from, and so again, just wanted to recognize our finance staff that they've been working late, they've been working here some nights till 11 o'clock, and they put in a lot of work, and it was a big effort that they're still working on to get that going, and keep that, keep that transition and finalize it, 12th Street light poles, they are working, our staff working with Spencer Electric started to drill nine-foot, 30-inch wide holes for the bases for the light poles that we've talked about at a number of recent council meetings, so those are starting to go in, and it's kind of a race against time, we want to make sure to have those solar lights up prior to PG&E de-energizing the ones that are on the existing poles, so they got two of them dug and poured today, there's 28 total, so we're anticipating about two weeks for them to complete that, but it's going to take a lot of work from our street staff, so that people can be patient, and we're looking forward to that being done. I wanted to just put in, just recognize that there have been a number of volunteers who have recently improved the bike park, and a couple of them, just volunteers from the public, Curtis Sealy, who works for Wall &amp; Construction, Stephen Pearl, I don't know if he works for Wall &amp;, but he's a well-known bike rider and designer, so they turned that into a pump track, which kind of keeps the momentum from, you know, throughout the course, and it's a really fun track, and it's useful for people of all ages, so they put some thought into design, and they came up with funds independently to make that something that is more fun and useful for riders of different skills and different ages, so it's seen a lot more use, that's the good news, but now I know we're going to be struggling to figure out where we put them if we get our parks grant for Newburgh Park, so I think that's a problem we can solve, but it's good to see people out there and enjoying that. And then just wanted to remind the public that we have Friday night Fun Night from 6 to 9, it's, that's a recreation program, they're putting it on in the evenings at a time where, you know, kids could go to the park, and they, gives their parents a chance to go out, and has a place where their kids can be supervised, so with that, that's all I have to report.
All right, any questions for Mayor? All right, future agenda items? If you have to think that hard, aren't any, moving on to council reports, Dean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Looking up at the camera, how did everybody manage to get through the 36 hours of power outage? Did it teach you a lesson? Were you prepared? If you went to businesses here local, and they're out of propane and lanterns and flashlights and DC cell batteries, guess what, most businesses are proactive, they get that stock back into place, if you did not get it, you should be ahead of the curve and start putting this into your means of surviving and equality of life, because it's going to come back, it's not going to go away, they've sort of taught us that PG&E is going to play games with us, so it's better to be having a quality of life and plan for that. Last meeting, I brought up the fact that it only has one gas station in the city, and that's Renner Petroleum on Newburgh, if you do not have a membership card, fill out the application, and you'll have one so that you do not have to sit there wondering where you're going to get gas, there's a lot of locations to have backup generators, take advantage of Renner. If there are businesses that actually have taken the challenge and actually gotten backup generators, and you have a service station that's ready to go, let me know so I can actually broadcast that as an information so that people have multiple choices, otherwise, right now, we only have one choice. I went to the River Coast Energy Authority meeting, it started at 3:30, and it ended at 7:30, and all I got to say is, oh my gods, there's a lot of people in this community that do not like Cogen generation plants, because of the evil particulate that they put out, they don't care about anything else other than the fact that it's an evil, we had close to 40 people given two minutes at a whack to get up to say identically the same thing. I am in favor of Cogen plants, but I didn't bring that up because I knew I'd have more people animated and mad at me, so I just kept my mouth shut, so they're not going to watch our meeting anyhow, so, they'll only watch Arcata's meetings. On Monday, the 11th, at 2 o'clock, at our Veterans Memorial Building on Main Street, the Fortuna Senior Services is going to be doing a Veterans Memorial Event, it is open to the public, it is free, there is generally limited parking, and there's generally limited seating, if you want to come to enjoy something that recognizes the veterans that have given us what we have today, show up early, half an hour, 45 minutes, Richard Cortez, who served in the Coast Guard for 10 and a half years, will be the speaker to be able to describe what he did and how he felt about his time giving back to his country. Two things left, one, for the folks that enjoy watching a good-quality council meeting, thank you for watching us, we are, we try to be informative, to be able to provide you updates what's going on, and input about any kind of events happening in the city, God bless America, God bless our troops, may you all be safe and come back to our wonderful country, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Dean, Mike.
Thank you, and I did weather the power shut-off, and I was better prepared than I thought I was, but I did get a bigger generator because I wanted to be able to help out my neighbors, so that will allow me to do that, also, I was able to attend the Grave Matters, and that was a very fun time, I can't remember, I have not made it to all of them, I know this was the 10th one, so I've probably been to about seven of them, but it was a great, they did a great job, had some great stories, the backstory on the one that I remembered them repeating was pretty good, they fleshed out some more details on that, was great, I highly recommended that they continue with it, we'll see if they do or not, it's also an opportunity to learn more about our community and the people that went before us. I have upcoming historical meeting on the 13th, and an HCOG meeting on the 21st, and other than that, it's been a pretty unremarkable last two weeks, if you don't count the power shut-offs, I did remember that the one in October, that was the worst one because I was filling in for the Lolita Fire Department at the Antique Show, and it was 31 degrees when I woke up in that building that morning, and I do not want to repeat that, so, on to Tammy.
Jeremy, we just skipped Tammy, remember?
Just go right over.
It's too early in the month, so I haven't done my Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting yet, or Parks and Rec is a quarterly meeting, so it'll be a little bit before we meet again, I did have a chance to attend the Redeck Housing Luncheon on October 25th, and it was really just more of a fact-finding conversation for an hour and a half, Greg Foster, the director of Redeck, kind of emceed the meeting, the conversations were around housing, and how much do we really need to build up for our population size, he gave an example of how he grew up in Miranda with a family of five, and they encumbered one home, and now those same five people, he moved into his own place, his mom and dad moved into his little place, his other sister moved into her place, and now the same five people take three homes to house them, so is there really a housing shortage, or is there just, how we live is different, then it kind of went into the conversation about affordable housing, and what, how do you define affordable housing with all the increased mandates for solar and different things like that for the cost of new development, and then it went into, do we have the workforce to create more housing because we don't have the skilled labor, so it was, it wasn't problem-solving that day, it was fact-finding, so we can kind of focus our intentions moving forward as these conversations continue throughout the county, and then I also got to participate in trunk-or-treat, and I thought that was a really, really fun event for a lot of families, they closed down Main Street from 9th to 12th Street from 3 to 5, they actually closed it at 2, so people could set up, and it was nice to have the trunk-or-treat option, because, for example, my business is not on Main Street, so I set up a car and decorated the trunk and handed out candy to kids, and I will tell you that I bought 1,456 pieces of candy, and I only had about three handfuls left at the end, so, there was a lot of kids that had a lot of sugar high that night, but it was a really fun event, I heard repeatedly how much the parents appreciated the closure of Main Street, so for the safety of the event, and I would put that next to the Chili Cook-Off for attendance, it was incredible, and that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Tammy.
Okay, well, Mayor answered most of my report, I do want to say that November 11th is Veterans Day, so vets really do appreciate your thanking them, you know, they really did a lot for our country, so if you know a vet, do thank them for their service, that's all I have to report.
All right, thanks. I had a pretty quiet couple of weeks, except for the power shut-off, that actually made things quiet, too, because it couldn't work, so Redeck meeting was canceled because of that, I also attended Grave Matters, thought they did a fantastic job, if you guys missed out, you need to make sure you go next year, and I do need to report that I will not be on the Housing, Community, and Economics Development Committee this year for the League of California Cities, I had a conflicting schedule in January, they changed their typical meeting dates, and so the week that they rescheduled to, I already have commitments, and so between not being able to attend that one, and probably not attending the one that's in Southern California, that kind of put me out of the running for staying on that board, so you can take that off my little things, Yana, and we'll look at it again next year, other than that, I think we're good, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn from someone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks.
And thank you, folks, for outlasting us as well.